I'm gonna... Streaming. Do we know where streaming?
Recording stopped.
Got it?
Recording in progress.
Call the March 3rd, April 3rd Common Council Meeting Order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
Alderman Hopefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Ikeman?
Here.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Here.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Here.
Alderman Barber?
Here.
Alderman Nelson?
Here.
We have a courtroom, please rise and join the Pledge of Legions. As always, first agenda item is citizens' comment period. Any citizen wishing to speak, please rise, come forward, give us your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you. Mr. Seamer, good evening. Hold on, hold on.
Okay. Obviously, we got a mayor's election tomorrow night. What's gonna happen? Well, maybe the mayor knows, maybe stuff in the ballot box, who knows? But should the mayor win, should the mayor win reelection, I will guarantee, I'll repeat that, I will guarantee a recall next year, this time next year, I will guarantee it. If I have to go out every... There's been rumors going around that mayor, should he lose, is gonna shred a bunch of records. Let me caution... That you're trying to cover up? You know, I don't know, I'm just asking for a friend, just asking for a friend. That's all I got. We'll see what happens tomorrow night.
Thank you, Mr. Seamer.
Thank you. Rick Prisbella, 9244 West Grandview Court. My comments, I want to make a quick comment in regards to the first item that's on your agenda tonight regarding the increase in fees for the UDO. As a citizen of Franklin for the last forty years, I actually am in favor of increasing of the fees. It's been a long time since they've been increased, and being a taxpayer and so forth, I understand that. However, my comment tonight really is the fairness of the timeframe as far as being approved. It came to me that the, I just saw about it at the Planning Commission meeting about three weeks ago, that it was on the agenda at the UDO. And here we, it got approved, here we are tonight, as far as getting approved, hopefully maybe tonight. With that in mind, when I say fairness, what I'm trying to say is that there's, whether it be an engineer, a developer, a property owner, who has come into the city to do a project, and it takes a lot of time to do that, whether it be they're in the concept mode or so forth. So with doing that, I just think it's unfair to the person who's already dealt with staff, whether it be the engineering, the planning, the planners and so forth. My suggestion, and maybe the council can consider this, is maybe a grace period for the people that have already approached the city and are working on a project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prisbella. Anyone else? Mr. Johnson, good evening.
Grant Johnson, 7374 Cambridge Drive. Surprised he didn't say hi to me last night at dinner, Mayor. I was there, he should have just waved to me, that's all he had to do. Little backstory quickly, my first interaction with this mayor, I asked him for some, I'll get that, he got it to me, something that was about two years old. Lie upon lie upon lie. I far warned you, I'm not the nicest guy. I don't like people who lie and who are corrupt. I think he might have figured that out at this point. Tomorrow, new mayor, John Nelson, looking forward to you sitting in that seat. But see, what's interesting for me, it really doesn't matter who wins, because I have so much information, win or lose, two or three people up there actually, but mainly you. I'm not stopping. I'm gonna continue to come to you, and I am gonna uncover, if I uncover one fiftieth of what you do, I'll be happy. We've only just begun, maybe I'll sing that for you tomorrow. Spending millions, millions. I can't, I can't even, leadership, what a joke, what an absolute joke. My five inside here, Mayor, say you're very nervous. You're very nervous, and you should be, not because you may win or lose, because of all the stuff that we have specifically on you. I have a wonderful website, I have not been kind to you there. Nobody argues the facts. Not one person has said, "Grant Johnson, that's a lie." I have the proof, how much time do I have left? Okay. Boy. You're gonna have a hard time filling jobs if you get reelected. The rumor in every municipality, which by the way, the majority hate us and you, is that we have a toxic environment here. Not my words, several other cities, that's what you created. And I hope your father's proud, should have been a doctor like him.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else? Ms. Ingalls, good evening.
Hello. Joydrin Gonzalez, 7573 Highview Drive, Greendale. I'm asking the board to please hold over the discussion for the extraordinary events regarding the Rock Sports Complex until the committee, until it can be heard at the Committee of the Hall. This was a unanimous vote and decision made by the License Committee on 2/20/23. I also would like to, I guess, explain, define. We keep getting kind of this hamster wheel answer and conversation regarding some of the noise ordinances, and this one that I have here is 15-3.1107H. Occasional outdoor activities exempted. The provisions of this section shall not apply to occasional outdoor gatherings, public dances, shows, and sporting and entertainment events, excluding regularly scheduled school athletic events, provided the events are conducted pursuant to any permits required by the City of Franklin. So I guess the biggest word in that entire ordinance is the word occasional. And 181 days or 50 days or 150 days of ongoing events is not occasional. Occasional is once a week, maybe twice a week, depending on if you're looking at an entire year. So with that being said, when you look at a contract, the definition in a contract of occasional, which I would say an ordinance is a contract with your citizens and the city, is occasional means occurring infrequently at irregular intervals and according to no fixed or certain scheme, acting or serving for the occasion or only on particular occasions. With the amount of events that are being proposed, that's not occasional. So I believe the wrong ordinance is being cited and used and understood by much of the city's staff. No one here would have a problem with any of these events if we were respected as neighbors and the noise was kept to a minimum onto the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ingalls. Anybody else? Miss Ginn, good evening.
Good evening. Dana Gint, 901 West Hawthorne Lane. I'm here to comment about the extraordinary entertainment events that are, were previously approved by the Common Council to be sent to the Committee of the Hall, it was a unanimous decision, and then that Committee of the Hall meeting was canceled, I believe, because illnesses or bad weather or something like that. But my concern is that obviously there were about fourteen Licensing Committee meetings that dozens of citizens showed up to, and the Licensing Committee came up with a long list of recommendations, which is what the Common Council on February 20th approved to send it to the Committee on the Hall. So I'm just asking that the entertainment events, the series of entertainment events, I'm not talking about the fundraisers, be sent to the Committee of the Hall and then to the Common Council. And previous applications, it's very concerning to me that this was pushed forward in April when most of these series of events are approved in May. I have applications from several years prior, the application, and obviously I've asked for the application information to be included on the public file, and it hasn't been, but I'm just looking back on the references for previous years, their applications are submitted at the end of March, and those are always on the May agenda. So it's very concerning to me that this is on the April agenda to try and get pushed through for some apparent reason when the events actually start in June. So there's plenty of time to have a Committee of the Hall meeting and a Common Council meeting to discuss the entertainment events for the, for all events in the City of Franklin. And obviously, the noise is the issue, and it needs to be 50 decibels at the property line, which is what Joe Diddle stated, and is what Heath Eddy has stated, so those need to be complied with. And that the speakers pointed out, at the residential homes, which is noncompliant with the county contracts, and is just completely unreasonable, need to be turned into where people are sitting, and that's at the umbrella bar and at the stadium. There's been letters submitted from the mayor to the developers saying that the noise is a nuisance, and that the speakers pointed at neighbors are a problem, and I'd really appreciate it if that was finally addressed. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the Committee members and commissioners that are not gonna be on the council anymore, I appreciate your service, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ginn. Anybody else? Mr. Kerner, good evening.
Good evening. Dale Kerner, 8630 West Hawthorne Lane. You know, he can do what he wants up at the Rock, but it's a noise, and it's not fair to the rest of us, we complain time and time again, I don't think anybody else in this room would put up with it. I can't even have the grandkids stay overnight when summer comes because of the noise. It's an ongoing thing, it's inconsiderate, we ask for equality of life, I guess that's why I moved to Franklin, and we're not getting that, and my neighbors in Greendale are being hurt by it also. We're not trying to make anybody fail, but I think it's completely unfair what's going on, and we were promised that when the stadium first started, that noise wasn't gonna be a problem, they have, they can mitigate it somehow, there's special speakers and that, well, that's not what's happening. It got so bad on, I believe it was a week ago Saturday, or I don't remember the day, UWM was playing, could have been Friday, and there's nobody in the stands, and the speakers are full blast. I called UWM, and somebody gave me the name of the Secretary of the Dean down there, and they wanna aware what was going on up here and stuff like that, and they're gonna look into it, and I hope they can bring the noise down, and maybe you guys can learn by them. I live, my backyard up at their parking lot, which has been illegally filled in, I told the city engineer about that, he made nothing of it. They took landfill, clay, dirt, and put it back there, and you've guys walked back there, and it's disaster, and I heard that he's gonna either have to remove the fill or put a clay cap on there, well, when that happens, that berm that we were promised gonna be, I believe it was 10 feet high, we had a meeting with the developer, it'll be gone completely. The berm, the main purpose is it separates us from the parking lot and the lighting back there. That's all I can say, it's just, you know, every meeting I go, we complain about the sound and nothing's done. So let's, let's do something, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerner. Anyone else? Anyone else? Supervisor Taylor, good evening.
Thank you, Steve Taylor, 2812 West Hilltop Lane. It's kind of fitting that 15 years ago, Alderwoman Wilhelm and I walked in this building together, got sworn in, and tonight, we walked in at the same time for your last meeting, and I want to commend you on your dedication and service to Milwaukee County. I saw the proclamation in the council packet, and really focused on, I think, part of your career before you were on the council, when you were on the Environmental Commission. And just so you know, last month, we, the county board, I brought forward a citation that you'll be receiving shortly, that I had a hand in writing, and I'm highlighting some of the good work you did here in your 15 years on the council. Mayor Olson, I would think it was about a year and a half ago, I started, you know, we, I thought we were friends, and we talked multiple times a week, and I told you that I thought that you were really consolidating power around you, that your hands and fingers were in everything, and it reminded me of previous mayors where they really kind of got too big for their britches, and I can just picture you, there's a reason why some of us have nicknamed you the boss. I can picture you with a, in your office, with a red and white checkered tablecloth across your desk, and just leaning back in your chair on your cellphone, saying, "That's how I do things, that's how I roll, that's how I get things done." I can just picture that, 'cause I've seen it, I've been in the office when you've had those conversations. And I just think that, that the city's had enough, and hopefully come tomorrow election, that we have a change here in this community. I'm also here to commend the business owners, the brick and mortar business owners that have stood up and stood up against you in this election, they're tired of the shakedowns, they're tired of the pay to play, they're tired of you taking a fence, a shed, a deck before hundreds of million dollar developments because you want to politically hurt them for not backing you. And then lastly, I want to say that the residents that come up to council meetings and speak, and want to share their opinions and share their voices, they're not village idiots, and I surely do not get them to show up here and speak to humiliate you. You do a fine job on your own.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anybody else? Anybody else? Seeing no one else rise, I will close this comment period, move on to better things this evening. I have two proclamations, one for Alderwoman Hanneman, and one for Alderwoman Wilhelm, and let's do, since it's on the agenda that way, let's do Alderwoman Hanneman first. Glenn, can you hand me that microphone, please?
Sure.
Go over there. Taren? Yeah. There you go. Yeah, that one's not gonna work. Use that one, there you go. Beautiful. Zoom. Okay. I'll do it, is that okay? All right. This is a proclamation in recognition of and in gratitude for the public service of Alderwoman Sherri C. Hanneman. Whereas Sherri C. Hanneman entered Aldermanic office upon April 21st, 2020, following her election by the people of District 4. And whereas during her tenure, Alderwoman Hanneman served on the License Committee, the Finance Committee, the Civic Celebrations Commission, the Parks Commission, and the Plan Commission. And whereas Alderwoman Hanneman was elected to the Office of Common Council President on September 21st, 2021. And whereas prior to her service as Alderwoman, she had provided substantial service and time to the City of Franklin, including while working on a task force for the years leading up to the adoption by the Common Council in 2006 of within the hours of the first in Wisconsin local adoption, local government ordinance, providing for residency restrictions for convicted sex offenders and child safety zones, and public gathering regulations in relation thereto aimed at protecting the health and safety of the children and the public in Franklin. Whereas she has decided at this time to not run for reelection, the elected term of office of Alderwoman Hanneman will expire at midnight the morning of the third Tuesday of April. And whereas Alderwoman Hanneman's service has always been based on her interest in serving the public and making the world a better place, now therefore be proclaimed that I, Stephen R. Olson, Mayor of the City of Franklin, Wisconsin, on behalf of the citizens of Franklin, the staff of city government, and those public officials and staff who know you and worked with you, and all the people that have served, good luck and Godspeed. Okay. You're next. Well, you don't have to, but... Okay. This one is obviously for Kristen. This is a proclamation in recognition of the gratitude for the public service of Alderwoman Kristen M. Wilhelm. Whereas Kristen M. Wilhelm entered Aldermanic office upon April 15th, 2018, following her election by the people of District 3. And whereas Alderwoman Wilhelm has been reelected for all of the terms of the office since then, most of them unopposed, no, all of them. Whereas during her tenure, Alderwoman Wilhelm served on the Environmental Commission, the Board of Health, the Quarry Monitoring Committee, the Complete Streets and Connectivity Committee, the License Committee, the Finance Committee, Economic Development Commission, Parks Commission, and the Library Board. And whereas prior to her service as Alderwoman, she provided substantial service and time to the City of Franklin, including while working with subcommittees and participating in the Plan Commission and Common Council meetings back at the start of the century. That's from 2000, yeah. I still got you beat. Resulting in substantial provisions being added to the City of Franklin Unified Development Ordinance, primarily set forth in her favorite chapter, Part IV, the Natural Resources Protection... Yeah, well, I got the mic. Which persons in the occupation of natural resources regulations within the state of Wisconsin have stated throughout the years that the City of Franklin natural resources regulations are the most protective regulation thereof statewide. And whereas, as she, you know this by heart? No, I mean proclamation. And whereas, as she's decided at this time not to run for reelection, the elected term of office, Alderwoman Wilhelm, will expire at midnight the morning of the third Tuesday of April. Whereas Alderwoman Wilhelm's service has always been based on her interest in serving the public and furthering the interests of those for whom she worked, and protecting and improving natural resources. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Stephen R. Olson, Mayor of the City of Franklin, on behalf of all citizens and the staff, and all those public officials and staff we know and worked with, and all the people, I wish you good luck and Godspeed.
Thank you.
So Alderwoman Wilhelm asked to say a few words, but I'm gonna offer Alderwoman, or Hanneman first.
I guess so. We are even, Alderwoman. Very good, very good, very good. Thank you for that lovely proclamation, Mayor, and I want to thank the citizens of the 4th District. I had a wonderful three years working for them and on behalf of them. It's been a tremendous opportunity, I said I can't believe how fast three years has gone by, and things that we did accomplish. So I want to thank you, my colleagues up here, I've enjoyed working with each of you. And I also want to give a particular thanks to the staff, everyone at Franklin City Hall for all of their hard work, and the police chief for your crew and the fire department. We have wonderful people working in this city, and I've had the pleasure and the honor of working with so many of you, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you, good luck. Kristen?
I've sort of outlived most of the staff here, I think. Okay, well, some of this you might have heard, I had a farewell letter that I posted on my Alderman Facebook page, but while the proclamation does a fine job mainly highlighting my first eight years as a volunteer, I'd like to take this final opportunity to mention how I became an elected official, and what an honor it has been to represent the kind and passionate residents of Franklin the last 15 years. I'll give you the short version, can we all say that, Jesse's short version, I mean, which is never truly short. I landed in Franklin 34 years ago, and shortly after, I resigned from the Federal Aviation Administration at General Mitchell Airport to raise our wonderful children, Kendra and Carl. And my son is here. Oh, that one got me. I later began volunteering at Pleasantview School. Missing my child at home and wanting to share a part of that experience, I envisioned and helped create Pleasantview's outdoor education area. Every child got to plant one plant and toss a Dixie cup, Dixie cup of seed, and many children had never planted anything before. Through that approval process, I was approached by my then Alderwoman, Chris Magir, to join the reformed Environmental Commission, which started me on the inside journey of local government. One day I had a concern, but my Alderman was not being helpful to me. He said, "If you can think, if you think you can do a better job, maybe you should be Alderman." And I said, "Well, maybe I will." And he says, "Ha ha, you don't have a chance." So I ran my first election, and I campaigned and won by six votes. So your vote matters. With that, I'd like to share with the truly wonderful people of Franklin that I've enjoyed many things in my 23-year career in public service to the City of Franklin, especially the people who have always provided support for the many projects we accomplished together. Your happiness with our accomplishments has always been my measure of success. Time and space here could never do justice to the years of efforts that claimed thousands of hours of our lives in testimonies, meetings, letters, disappointments, and triumphs that finally brought you a direct road to your grade school, a vacated Sycamore Street, the long-awaited development of Pleasantview Park, grant funding, Trail Connections, a safer walk along College Avenue, and at the high school. These, there are, these are just a few of the high points in a field of appreciation I encountered whenever I toured your neighborhood and had the good fortune to speak with so many of you. many of you. It was your support that made all of this and more possible. As I leave office, I encourage all of you to remain interested in the public process and continue to attend meetings, ask questions, and make sure your interests are represented. All my best and farewell. That's my son there. Really proud of him. Am I supposed to stand up too? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. That one's really sweet.
Okay, the way this works though is because the two of them are leaving office, the majority of the motions and seconds. Okay, with that, Item C, approval of the regular Common Council.
Here as an Alderwoman, and I thank Sherri very much, Alderwoman Hanneman and Alderwoman Wilhelm, for all the years of service, mentorship, helping me, always being there, and so forth. I know this isn't goodbye, and I know we'll be in contact. Just understanding the process for those listening at home, for all of those that are here tonight. May I ask why this is Alderman Nelson's last meeting as an Alderman after serving two years, two terms, six years, why there's not a proclamation for him for his years of serving as an alder? May I ask what the process of that is or why he's not being acknowledged this evening?
Sure, and we talked about this. You want to explain it? You want me to? It's because... It's because we don't know who's going to be sitting up here and continuing. So whoever wins the election tomorrow will give the proclamation to the other person on the 18th.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, back to the agenda. Approval of the regular Common Council meeting minutes of March 21st. Any additions or corrections? Barber and Hanneman, all's in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on. We have no hearings, no organizational visits, no letters and petitions. We go to G1, Reports and Recommendations, an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Fee Schedule, and given Alderman Nelson.
Thank you. Just a few notes here, and I saw what it has been from the 2004 to now. And then hearing Mr. Prisbilla come up here, who was a very accomplished developer, and I do have concerns that these fees, some of them are pretty substantial, and what we don't want to have do is stymie any future developments or any other roadblocks for people that want to get some things done. So I know there's probably a few that may want to comment on this, and I'll circle back around, but I would like to hear from Mr. Martinez.
Mr. Martinez? Good evening, Common Council. Just a background information on this, the fee schedule was adopted in the year 2000, then updated in 2004. For the last, almost last 20 years, hasn't been updated. So staff took the initiative to update the fee schedule using the Consumer Price Index just to adjust for inflation across the, all the items. So all the items has been increased or are proposed to be increased equally.
Okay. Okay, and I just want to make sure, have you, you know, how do these fit in line with other communities? Because we all hear that Franklin's the most difficult place to deal with, most expensive to deal with. We don't want, we want to change that. We want to change that type of perception. And I just want to make sure that these fees that we are looking to increase are reasonable and in line with other communities so that we're not the most difficult or worst, the highest. And so have, has that been taken into consideration as far as where you came up with these numbers?
This update is only to adjust for inflation. We are not changing the fees or changing the fee for one type of application different to another type of application.
Well, one fee here, please, if you wish to talk about it, is, goes for the planned unit development, $1,700, now $9,500. And just, I mean, just examples. I mean, somebody just jumped out at me that are up pretty substantial. Preliminary subdivision, 750, the plat, 750 to 8,000. $750 to 8,000. I'm just looking at these numbers, if that's, I'm one of many that, a few I'm sure that have commented, I don't want to monopolize this, but I'm just saying, I just want to make sure, you know, maybe this, we want to do, make sure our homework's done, that we're not leading and overpricing, that we still have something that's reasonable and obtainable. I'll yield.
Just to clarify that the increase is approximately 60% from the year 2004 to 2022.
Mr. City Attorney? We got two.
No, we are only adjusting for inflation.
We should just leave these mics on. Okay, so Alderman Nelson has this sheet here. So this says Oak Creek's 2022 adopted fees. And so if I'm looking at that, a subdivision fee for a preliminary subdivision plat in Oak Creek is 750, and it's $8,000 new in Franklin. The conditional use permit, which we call a special use permit, 950, 1,600. PDD is the one that Alderman Nelson brought out, 1,700 for Oak Creek, 9,500. I guess I would like to table this and take Mr. Prisbilla's comments into consideration and have a comparison, staff put a comparison together. So I'll make the motion to table this until the next meeting or comparisons of other communities and the comments at citizen comment period.
Can I offer you a different motion? Can I offer you a different motion? Since the next meeting is the organizational meeting of the Common Council, my recommendation would be that you refer it back to staff and then send this back to the Plan Commission too. So send it back to staff for revision.
Well, I'm not going to be here. I just don't think you should pass it tonight, so if that was...
That's fine by me. There's no rush on this, but I'd refer it back to staff and run it back through.
Well, I figured it would have to go back to staff because I'm certainly, Alderman aren't going to do the work to calculate it. So send it back to staff and put it back on the agenda as the chair or the mayor sees fit.
Is there a second to that? Second by Alderwoman Hanneman. We're starting it off right. I've got Barber then Holfer.
Regal, have you thought about the grandfathering in that was suggested during citizen comments about all those that have applied or are in the process right now, that that would be something that would be grandfathered out of the increases, I guess you'd say?
Well, if the application is submitted before the ordinance take effect, so it will go to the current schedule.
So anybody, anybody after the ordinance is passed, that would affect them and nobody before that? I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the process, so.
Correct.
Again, when you take it back to look at, that maybe could be articulated.
Along those lines, you're suggesting here an annual Consumer Price Index adjustment. I would like to see that occur on the same date or about the same date every year so that people coming in would know if I have my information by this date, it's going to be this price, and after that date it would be adjusted. I just don't want it to be floating. We haven't gotten time to it this week. We'll get to it next month. I want a steady expectation there. Thank you.
Anybody? Motion been made and seconded, refer back to staff, run it through the system again. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. G2 on page 17 is a resolution conditionally approving a land combination for a couple of tax keys on 5601 West Ryan Road and 9600 South 58th Street for Crohn's Incorporated. Hanneman and Barber. All those in favors? Any opposed? Motion carries. G3, page 45 is extension of agreement with Rayburn Consulting for Planning Services. Barber and Eichmann, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. G4, page 55, it's approval for a job description for community service officer for the police department. Well, we should have voted before you hit the chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Good job, Chief.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
G5 is, on page 61, is approval of revised job description for the position of emergency services dispatch clerk. There is some comment on this, Chief.
Yeah, this is very administrative changes, wording changes regarding pay grade, no increase in pay. Probably the biggest change in requirements is stopping the requirement for typing 35 words a minute. I know that was a question that came up. We just looked at it and felt that it wasn't necessary this time. Dispatchers now don't type the reports, the incident reports for officers. They basically have some basic key boarding work associated with the dispatching, which doesn't require speed typing. And we also found that younger people nowadays, they all grew up with keyboarding, so they're all very well qualified. We hadn't had anybody that we, when we tested anybody, failed that they snuck the test, so we thought it wasn't even worth bothering.
Personnel committee recommends approval. Alderman Holfer?
I did hear some concern over the issue, and I just want to reiterate or make sure that it is your professional opinion as command staff that this is an appropriate action to take. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Nelson?
Thank you. And Chief, you and I talked briefly before this, and I've read the correspondence from the citizen. And just to, again, reiterate that this is not an issue now, so there's no typing issue. I guess when you have a new dispatcher come on board, there's a pretty rigorous training that goes involved, and there's also probationary period. So if these new employees are not catching on or not grasping it, that would have been, that'd be addressed at that point. And if you're very confident that this is not an issue, that this is not something that needs to be in place, and HR is fine with it and personnel has been fine with it, then I just want to support your thoughts on that.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. I mean, we still would evaluate anybody for all their skills in dispatching, but that would be one of many that we evaluated. If for some reason they couldn't keep up with the keyboarding, that would be a reason to end their provision, which, again, we don't anticipate, but that's also a remedy. There's a concern.
Barber and Holfer. All those in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. G6. Thanks, Chief. G6, page 67, required changes to the City of Franklin Employee Health Insurance Plan due to the end of the public health emergency of COVID-19. Barber and Holfer. Thought it was supposed to be Hanneman and Wilhelm. Anyway, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. G7, page 69, resolution to award the 2023 Local Street Improvement Program, $1,517,048. It does include the Franklin Public Library parking lot. Seconded by Alderman Hanneman. Sure, Alderwoman Wilhelm read the council action sheet motion. Alderman Hann, uh, Holfer?
For the city engineer on your local street improvement program where it's in green indicating spot concrete curb and gutter replacement, is that the totality of it for 2023? So that takes up the leftover cost, the leftover funds from last year plus the funds for this year that we allocated?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Again, I compliment the council on not making this political. Every other community in the world has arguments about this, so thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. G8, page 77, is to vacate a service road from 60th to 58th Street on the frontage of Ryan Road. Is there a second? Motion seconded. Mr. City Attorney? I think you've got to bump microphone.
Should be put over until staff... As opposed to...
So Alderman Barber, is your motion to lay over? That's your second Alderwoman Hanneman? Done agree to? All those in favor of the motion to lay over signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Page 97, 79 is an ordinance to amend Municipal Code 92-2, adoption of standards administrative enforcement, Chapter 92, building construction. Mr.? Is there a second? Seconded by Alderwoman Hanneman. Discussion? Tony, you need to say something?
Nope, just here in case someone had a question.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Good job, Tony. For those of you in the audience, this is Tony Savoy, our Director of Building Inspections and Building Services. Okay, move on to G10, page 83. Resolution, and this is a big deal, resolution terminating tax incremental finance district number four, which we know as Ascension Hospital, TIF. Moved by Alderwoman Hanneman, seconded by Alderman Barber. Let me just do the numbers so people understand what's going on. This adds, this adds an increase of $60 million in tax base to the city this year. I'm sorry. It's not the correct numbers. Go to the spreadsheet. Assess value $60,714,000, new value this year. That gets credited against the assessed value for the entire city that calculates out your property tax rate. Of that, the city gets to take 30, 50% of that to increase our levy. That's a total tax of $528,000 to all of the taxing entities. The city benefits $132, roughly $133,000 additional levy by closing this tax incremental financing district this year. So that's a big deal. Alderwoman?
Point out that the second to the last, be it further resolved, states that Form PE 223, agreeing on the date, is what you're looking at. The next step, that's step one, then that goes to the DOR. The DOR signs it, the DOR gives it to the city, then it goes to step two, and then you'll get your final accounting report on PE 110. So if anyone is looking for those figures, you'll be looking for PE 110. Thank you.
Okay. The reason it's on tonight, it's not political, it is because we needed to do this before April 15th in order to capture the increment in 2023. Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call because everybody should be on record on this one. It's a good thing.
Alderman Holfer?
Aye.
Eichmann?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hanneman?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
And Nelson?
Motion carries. Six ayes, no no's, no absences, no abstentions. I will also point out that there are remainder funds. We did collect a year's worth of tax. So my head tells me a million, a million and a half dollars. It'll be divided up percentage-wise between all the taxing entities, so there's additional funds going to come available. funds going to come available because of that. So that's all good, too. On page 87, G11, we need to do this carefully. It's a resolution approving, approving the third amendment to site agreement between the City of Franklin and American Towers LLC at the Water Utilities Building. There's a motion to approve a resolution. That is the standard staff motion. If you read the text of the council action sheet, the recommendation actually is to deny it based on the competitive nature of the, the request of the, the lessy and the competitive nature of the industry, it now makes this a bad deal for the city. Alderman Wilhelm. Wait, wait, push it. Okay.
Kind of sounds like we weren't going to be able to get much more. If we, if we don't do this, we might miss out, so. Is there going to be another negotiated contract after this? They're still working on it, or where are we at with it? This will also be a loss if we don't do it.
They are not, they don't want to negotiate in public. We don't believe that there will be an adverse effect in declining this.
Okay. We don't believe it.
The city, the assistant city attorney, who negotiates these for many communities, does not believe there'd be an adverse effect.
I won't make that motion.
You won't, or you will?
I won't.
Is there a motion on this matter? Is there a second? Second, made by Barber, seconded by Hanneman. Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G12, on page 115, Wisconsin State and Local Memorandum of Understanding for Allocation of the Opioid Settlements. We need to adopt a resolution approving the execution of another agreement for some more money.
Motion adopt the resolution approving the authorization and execution and delivery of the Wisconsin State Local Government Memorandum of Understanding for the allocation of the opioid settlement proceeds, an addendum to the Wisconsin Local Government Memorandum of Understanding.
Made by Wilhelm, seconded by Barber. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Skip G14, or G13, it's closed session. Move on to item H, licenses. Alderman Wilhelm.
Thank you, Mayor. The license committee recommends the following on page one of our agenda. Approval for Best Buddies in Wisconsin Walk and Community Gathering. Approval for Rock Sports Complex Walk fundraiser for Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. Hold Rock Sports Complex Summer Concert Series of '23. Hold Rock Sports Complex, The Hill Has Eyes. Applicant Kaluzney, approve. Ivors, new and renewal, approve. Janaszewski, new and renewal, approve. Blue, approve. Hollins, approve. Honley, approve. Lujan, approve. Techen, approve. And the Franklin Noon Lions Club for Independence Day Celebration and St. Martin's Fair, approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't know about that last one, it's a pretty shady group. Mr. City Attorney.
With regard to the two extraordinary entertainment and special event items that were placed on hold, do I understand that to mean that they're placed on hold so that it goes to the next, likely the May 1 committee of the whole meeting?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's a hold till the May 1 committee of the whole. Everybody got that? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to vouchers. Is there a motion approving city vouchers, an ending date of March 30th, in the amount of $1,335,241.82, and property tax disbursements with an ending date of March 29th, in the amount of $18,046.90, and payroll dated March 24th, in the amount of $452,452.70, and payments of the various payroll deductions, in the amount of $447,704.87, plus city matching payments, and estimated payroll for April 7th, estimated at $436,000, and payments of the various payroll deductions in the amount of $243,000, plus city matching payments.
So moved.
Second.
Barber and Hanneman, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nelson?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
Hanneman?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Eichmann?
Aye.
And Hopefer?
Aye. Motion carries. Six ayes, no noes, no absence, no abstentions. With that, we're going to stop the stream and recording.
Three minutes.
We're going to take a three-minute break and then come back to closed session. I would imagine that the council's going to want to stream it after the closed session, so.
For closed session.
Yes, about to do that. Need to get to the paper. Is there a motion entered, closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State 1985 Sub 1, Sub Act? Considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, and reenter open session to same place thereafter to act on such matters as discussed therein as it deems appropriate. So moved.
Second.
Hopefer and Barber, Madam Clerk. Aye.
Eichmann?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hanneman?
Aye.
Barber?
Aye.
And Nelson?
Aye. Six ayes, no noes, no absence, no abstentions. We are going to take a three-minute break and then come back into closed session.